I'd like to call to order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners' agenda or meeting and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk would take the roll, please.
Commissioner McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Here.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Ball.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitman.
Here.
Are there any additions or deletions or changes to the agenda? Commissioner Rushing, do you have it?
No, I don't.
Howard.
I was going to make a motion that we do the following additions to the agenda. Under Proclamations, we add proclamation recognizing, I'm sorry. Proclamation recognizing Veteran of the Year David Robinson as 6A, Resolution 12-24 Collective Bargaining Agreement with the 31st Circuit Court FOC Supervisors as Item 11T, Resolution 1725 Collective Bargaining Agreement with Probate and Circuit Court Family Division Clerical Employees as Item 11U, and the November Regular Board of Commissioners Meeting Date Change as Item 11V. And that date change is to the 9th, I believe?
Yes. So moved. Are you made a motion support?
Yeah.
Okay, moved and supported, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 4, approval of the agenda?
I would move the approval of the agenda as amended.
Support. Moved and supported, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Minutes of previous meeting.
This time I'd like to move to approve the files and file the minutes of the September 21st '17 Commission Meeting and also the October 5th '17 Standing Committee Meetings.
Support. Motion support on the minutes, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to proclamations.
I would move to adopt the proclamation recognizing David Robinson as the 2017 Veteran of the Year and extend our deep appreciation for all his distinguished service to our great nation.
Support. Motion support, any discussion? Anybody know where he lives or resides, what area? Anybody?
Down.
I'll hunt him down, I'll find him. Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, items 7A through 7G, if you want me to read them, I will, but I'll go with 7A through 7G.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve items 7A through 7G and the consent agenda.
Support.
Motion support, anybody want to pull anything out of there and discuss it? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Let's go to reports of standing and special committees. Commissioner Rushing, let's start down with you.
I just want to bet you on, if you weren't aware, the Memphis Police Chief did a great job, resigned, moved to the west side of the state with his family, and they hired a new police chief, Dan Goke, out of Byer Township. I plan to meet him, he's 51 years old, and he's the new police chief in the city of Memphis.
Is that in your district?
Yes.
They're going to bring law and order to your district?
What's that?
They're going to bring law and order to your district.
I think we already have it. Do you have Tim Donlin? I don't believe you could remember him, he's our county sheriff.
Commissioner Dunn.
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner McConnell.
I think we need to give a little bit of a shout out to our shelter program. They had their adopt weekend, was it Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
And they got rid of all the animals from the shelter and even brought a few in that weren't in the shelter, from what I understand, and they were able to make some phone calls and knew where there was some people that wanted to get rid of some animals, or some cats, I guess, and they were able to get them adopted. So, turned out nice.
Understand it was a huge success, they were gone in 30 minutes or something like that, I think?
Now we're talking about it.
Good.
Yeah.
Anything else from judiciary or from you?
Well, and there was a very important meeting and one of the members missed. I mean, I saw him, I see him pretty well every morning when I shave, and we had our meeting with the, with Chemical Bank where our health retirement fund, or health insurance fund is at. Grown 9 percent, Dave said.
Yeah, 9 percent for the entire year, and we start off, of course, it was approximately 65 months ago, we're standing at $2 million, and with the stock market rate is and the investments and contributions, we are now over $44 million, and we have started drawing on it, but we still made a plus on it.
Very good.
Yep.
That's it, thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Tompkins.
At previous meetings, I've discussed the turnover at AAA1B, the area agency, on aging in Detroit that covers six counties, and I'm pleased to announce that we just completed our executive search and extended an offer to our top candidate. He is Michael Carson, Vice President of Optimum Care in Illinois, it's a division of United Health Group, and he made it through the vetting stage of about 100 different candidates. AAA1B is something I found out during the process, is the 14th largest nonprofit in We had two strong finalists, everyone involved with the interview process concluded that, given his experience, leadership, insight and passion, that he was the right selection, and so our board is now negotiating an employment agreement with him.
Very good. Anything else?
Not this evening.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Just one item, and I spoke about this before, and it, we just completed the health assessment for the county, and at our St. Clair County Health Board meeting yesterday, we went over some of the information, and the most appalling information is our ranking as a county in terms of vaccination for just about any age group you want to pick, especially children and teenagers. We rank 79th, if you took the total, out of 83 counties. And we talked about, Dr. talked about some of the things that are happening. A young person was blinded with measles, I didn't know that could happen. Young man lost his hearing due to mumps. These are easily treatable diseases.
Preventable.
Preventable, right. And then I think one died from whooping cough. I guess what I don't understand, and I have a little 17-month-old granddaughter, I don't understand not getting him vaccinated and then let him catch some of these really dangerous diseases and then suffer with that sickness. I mean, how caring of a parent are you are to subject your children to that? I just find it incomprehensible, I really do. And then she was also pointing out that mumps, not mumps, polio is on the comeback. Well, when I was a teenager, there wasn't a vaccine for polio. I saw youngsters in my school get polio and how they came back with steel braces on their legs and, you know, real problems, so I just, I can't wrap my head around what these people are thinking, just cannot.
The western part of the county, K-PAC, is one of the worst, the school system, from when you look at the numbers on those reports, right, when the county's broken down even farther, and we've talked about it there many times, that's, it's a big concern.
And I think Dr. Merkin pointed out that we probably aren't going to deal with this issue until there's an epidemic, and then everyone's going to be saying, "Well, why didn't you do something about it?", you know? But it's growing. During the 70s and 80s, if you track back to St. Clair County, we're down to almost zero, and now the curve is going up on almost all of these infectious diseases.
Wasn't, Howard, wasn't there a law or regulation that said if someone wanted to waive it, that they had to meet with a health professional to talk about it?
They do, yeah.
That hasn't changed.
That hasn't changed.
But it hasn't.
And they do.
But that hasn't.
But I think, I think, no, I think people are coming in and they read on Facebook or something, some fake news report, and, you know, they've got it in their head that it doesn't work, you know, or it's dangerous, and you just can't convince them otherwise. But if they get cancer and you tell them you have to take chemotherapy, they go, "Oh, yeah." You know, they selectively pick out what science they want to use and what science they want to reject, which, you can't do that with science.
Anything else, Commissioner Hydeman?
That's all.
That's it?
Did I do enough politicking? No. Something? I'll get off of my.
Well, he believes in fake news, we just heard, so obviously.
You're not going to start kneeling down on us, are you?
Well, I think he's coming over.
All right, I'll take a pass myself. Let's go to citizens wishing to address the board. First one I have is Linda, looks like Maroni, Animal Control. Take the podium if you would, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
That's fine.
Yep. Yep, go right up there and tell us what you want to tell us, and if you get too long-winded, we've got a sergeant at arms down here that's not shy at all.
I practice all day, so I wouldn't, that wouldn't happen.
All righty, go right ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. At Animal Control, all the animals who enter those doors receive care from a very devoted, hands-on staff. They receive food, medical care, clean shelter, and most of all, a sense that everyone cares what is happening to them. Once they are well, and sometimes it takes a while because they have trauma and stress from being abandoned or on the street, they're put into the adoption program, people come in, they adopt, if it doesn't work out, they can return them, the fees are reasonable, and then I wanted to say that ever since Sheriff Donilon and his amazing team of caregivers assumed operation of Animal Control, it's not the dismal place it used to be. They have, they have a program that is amazing because everybody there is really devoted to animals, and they knock themselves out taking care of them every single day, because I've seen it, because I've been walking dogs for five years, and myself included, anybody who wants to volunteer, all they have to do is go into the building and fill out a legal waiver. So I did that, and I've been, had a chance to observe Animal Control in operation for a long time, and I am really, the program of care and healing and adoption as it works is, is very, very good.
Move it.
Because their focus is adoption, adoption, adoption. And, you know, volunteers also, I don't know if I said this, can walk dogs in the back of the building in the motorcycle club's yard. Sheriff Donilon is an animal lover himself, and I think that's why he has assumed, you know, assumed operation of the facility and it's trying to do something about its formal dismal reputation. I just came here tonight because I think Animal Control needs more public support, and it certainly deserves it in every possible way. It's a wonderful organization, doing everything they can to help animals, and I have the highest respect for the staff down there, because I've seen them in operation for the past five years. There's just one improvement that I know they would like to make, there's a regulation or something that they have to hold animals for a certain length of time.
You'll have to conclude your remarks.
Really? I did three minutes already?
Yep.
And I can't say what I just wanted to say?
It goes fast when you're having fun.
Well, I've said that before.
Go ahead, go ahead and wrap it up.
Okay, there's a rule now that dogs have to be held until they're, for a certain amount of time, so their owners will have time to claim them, but very few owners ever do, so if the, if the time could be lessened, the animals, it's a lot of stress on the animals being kept that long, and they could be made available for adoption. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for putting up with me and listening to me, thank you.
Good evening, it's great to see everybody tonight. First, I'd like to say thank you to Positive Change for working with Animal Control on having a successful first-time adoption event at the Empty the Shelters that was sponsored by Bissell. As I'm sure those that participated in the event will attest, knowledge is power. The knowledge gained from this event will help them with future ones. You see, knowledge is power, but knowledge does not always come with power. Knowledge is the state of awareness of understanding gained and, gained from experience or study, learning specific information about something. There's something that we've always heard that way, that our parents have told us over and over while we were growing up, that education is always the key to success. There was a wonderful education opportunity on October 5th and 6th. It was called Shelter Behavior Seminar out in Bloomfield Hills. It was presented by the animal director from Animal Alliance, Kelly Bolin. It was sponsored by LACAD Allies. Normally the cost for this is $199 a person, they footed the entire bill. Michigan Pet Fund Alliance put it all together for all of us to learn and grow. It was wonderful for, to see people there from U-Paws, who drove over seven hours to be there. Amy from LaPierre County was there, Ken from McCombe Humane Society was there. There were also three of us from the Animal Advocates Group. There were a total of 117 people there to obtain the free education. The information that was presented was absolutely amazing. It was designed for shelter staff, animal control officers, shelter, rescue volunteers, administrators, and just anybody that wanted to attend. It was an opportunity to learn more about addressing the behavioral health of the animals that are in our care. We talked about TNR, Trap New to Return, and how it plays a role in the shelter for being a success, how to work with the incoming animals, and what the first thing is that they should be given after their intake shots, how to read an animal, how to work with them and become a better companion. I could go on for hours about what we learned, because it was 16 hours, it was a two-day session. The amount of information that Kelly sends you home with can be a bit overwhelming at first. I have to say I have not managed to read through all of it, but I'm working on it. I got a chance to speak with Kelly for a little bit after the seminar. I explained what we were hoping to do here in the county, and her reply was that if we needed any help, just to let us know, because she encourages outreach and community education. I got a chance to go to the seminar, again, there was another one on Sunday out in Flint, that was hosted by Concept Hope. This was about canine body language, understanding what you're looking at. It was a much shorter, three-hour seminar that also.
Excuse me, you'll have to make your closing remarks.
That also contained great information about the animal that you're working with. There are more seminars that are coming, and I believe it's important for each of us, our ACOs, our law enforcement, and our community, to educate themselves about the animals that they're working with. Setting up a standard of volunteer education, transportation, animal safety and enrichment, and placing these policies in the beginning, is the beginning of a good basis of running a successful facility. Remember, knowledge is power and education is the avenue to success.
Thank you. Shavina Hernandez, AC, is that air conditioning?
(laughing).
Not air conditioning?
It was just my easiest way to put it, Animal Control.
Oh, it's Animal Control, okay, thank you.
Yes. Hi, everybody, I'm Shavina Hernandez, I've spoken to you guys before. I come to you guys today because, for one, I do want to congratulate the Positive Change Group, that was a fantastic event that happened, and it cleared the shelters of the animals. There are still a few in there, I believe there's anywhere between six to nine cats in there. Since the last two months, they have not been accepting community cats, which I think that is fantastic. The only, there is one drawback at that, they have left the community high and dry on any avenues of how to turn or where to turn with community cats now that there's a, that we know that there's a problem, and we all do know that there's a problem within our county with community cats. They, they say, and I have spoken to them at the AC personally, that they support and they educate the community. They say call, they say call SNAP, that's exactly what they say, they say call SNAP. They have no education program in place for the community, for the community cats, to help lower this. They say they're supporting TNR, there's nothing in place for the AC to support the Trap New to Release, Trap New to Return programs, absolutely nothing. And another thing, you know, as peaceful as the protests were, and the people that we got to talk to in the community, I mean, we spoke to a lot of people. I spoke to a few people, and I've seen online as well, that, and they've come to me with this, that AC is saying, she, they're afraid to come forward with any real names, but I've had at least five people now tell me this, she is saying that they stopped taking cats because the protesters and the advocates are threatening them. I'm appalled by any professional person in a position would say that that is a threat. A peaceful protest that says, that tells people that you disagree with how they're handling a situation is a right that we have. To say that it's threatening in any way and to someone to take it as a threat in any way is absolutely appalling. The, we need to have something in place if they're not going to accept the cats. There's, that's all there is to that, there cannot be any, just shut the doors on an animal. We know that, I think it's great, yes, they're not taking them, but there has to be education, there has to be some kind of program in place to help. If they're not going to take the cats, they have to at least be part of the helping process of it. There's no support, this has to change. The overall, it just, between.
Excuse me, you'll have to make your closing remarks.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that just because someone disagrees with somebody's ideas does not make that threatening in any form, so, I mean, we're all professionals, we're all grownups, and we're all here to make this community better, and I hope that they understand that, and they stop that, that level of conversation to our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last speaker is Courtney Prot Saunders, Animal Control.
Good evening, Commissioners, good to see you all. Courtney Prot Saunders, I'm the spokesperson for the Statewide Political Action Committee for Animals, and I'm here this evening to address three important issues. So, first off, the RFP, the Request for a Proposal that went out to take over the animal sheltering care, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. It is a huge step in the right direction. St. Clair, the community is relieved and excited that you've taken this important step, and we fully support the efforts, and we've been promoting the opportunity to qualified animal welfare organizations in the area, and so please let us know if we can be of any further assistance, and we look forward to the results of the process. Secondly, last Saturday's Empty the Shelters Day, sponsored by the Bissell Foundation, thank you to the county for agreeing to participate in this event. It was a leap of faith, it was a first time for this county, and as many county residents witnessed firsthand, the people at Bissell are wonderful, and by working with them, you open up an avenue for all kinds of low and no-cost resources and community involvement that you didn't have previously. We are aware of some of the issues that took place at the event, but we don't want anyone to feel discouraged because we feel once a professional animal welfare organization comes on and takes over the care, a lot of those issues will dissipate. There's one ongoing issue I do want to talk about, because there's going to be some time before the relieving organization comes in and takes over, and it's important that during this time, between now and then, we continue to hold the county animal shelter to the highest possible standards. So, the current office manager sent out an email, and it went to many shelters in the area, and some of them contacted us asking to, for the validity of the content in the email. We did our due diligence and contacted the shelters mentioned, and the email is, is not true, but the email reads as such. "St. Clair County Shelter has adopted several new policies over the last year, one of which is to support our local TNR program," and as we've learned, that's Trap New to Return of our community cats, "conducted by a local humane society. We fully acknowledge and support this program. Our county shelter will operate as an open-admission shelter for cats based on available capacity." That's good. "That means we will not accept cats when we do not have room to house them safely for adoption. Citizens who wish to drop off a cat at our shelter are given resources and education on how to handle them and who to possibly contact for placement. Signed, St. Clair County Animal Shelter Office Manager Stephanie Ignish." So we reached out to the local shelters to find out who she may be referring to, we spoke with SNAP, McCombe Humane, McCombe County Animal Control, Santa Lac and Blue Water, and all of them confirmed that they are not receiving support from St. Clair County Animal Control.
Excuse me, you'll have to make your closing remarks.
So we went back to the shelter to ask which local humane society she's purporting to support, and she wasn't able to answer the question. So we brought this issue to your attention before, and we think the reason that it's important is because it makes the county look bad. Your surrounding counties are asking, "Is this true?" because it's not matching up with what we're saying, and we're unfortunately having to validate that, no, it's, it's not true. So I think, again, just validates the fact that you're doing the right thing and making the right step to privatize the operation of the shelter. So again, from the voters of St. Clair County, thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no unfinished business, we'll move into new business, items 11A through V, that's 22 items, it looks like a lot, but keep in mind that we have already gone over all of these issues at the committee level and other levels, so it goes rather quickly. So let's go to 11A, the approval of county dispersments for September of 2017.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the September 2017 county dispersments in the amount of $51,404,376 and 85 cents.
Support. Motion support, discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ball, uh, Greitman, excuse me. Commissioner Greitman.
Must be the hair.
It is.
Uh, yes. 11B, Resolution 1722, CBA Juvenile Counselors Association.
Chairman Greitman, I would move to approve the revised Resolution 17-22, which was distributed to the Board of Commissioners at this meeting ratifying the annual wage adjustment for the St. Clair County Juvenile Counselor Association for a period of January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2018.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a support and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, nevermind, roll call, sorry.
Sure. Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Greitman.
Yes. Item 11C, Department of Human Services Reappointment.
This time I'd like to move to approve the reappointment of Reverend Thomas Sepo to the Department of Human Services Board for a three-year term expiring 10/31/2020.
Support. Motion support, discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item D is Staff Development Day Memo.
I make a motion to approve the closure of the St. Clair County Health Department on December 8th, 2017 at noon to allow for annual staff development.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item E is Fiscal Year 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $41,246, which is for a portion of the Emergency Management Director's salary and fringe benefits.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing. Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item F, 2018 to 2022 Capital Improvement Program.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2018-2022 Capital Improvement Program as recommended by the Metropolitan Planning Commission.
Support? Any discussion on this? Pretty comprehensive report. We went over it in depth recently. Lindsay was here and talked about whatever we needed. If you have any questions? No discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item 11G is the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Director, or Board of Directors reappointments.
I would make a motion to approve the reappointment of Dan Casey as the EDA Director, Stephen Cooper, District 3 Representative to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term expiring 10/31/2020.
Support? Motion to support, any discussion? Okay, this, this one had a change in it. I think originally Cooper wasn't going to do it, changed his mind, now he's going to do it, so we're good to go. All right, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item H is the Landfill Conservation Easement Agreement.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the conservation easement on the 17-acre parcel on Parker Road between the St. Clair County Drain Commissioner and the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality for the Smiths Creek landfill borrow area.
Any discussion?
This is a pretty vast thing that happened to get this done, so how many years was this easement?
This one wasn't as bad as some of our prior well and projects.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item I, Resolution 1717, approving sponsor contract for design rehabilitation of runway 422, runway 4-22 lighting and rehabilitation of runway 10-28, crack sealing and paint marking.
That was a tongueful.
Damn, I'm telling you.
Mr. Chair.
Who wrote this?
I'm going to make it a little simpler. I move to approve the Resolution 1717 adopting the execution of the sponsor contract by the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners and the Michigan Department of Transportation for the purpose of obtaining federal aid for the development of the St. Clair County International Airport under contract number 2017-0655. That was easier?
That was shorter? Easier?
Well, we all know what we're talking about now, okay?
Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Wake up, guys. All right, we have a motion to support. Any discussion? Kathy's here, if we do have, we have several things from the airport. Kathy's here, if we have any questions, but I believe we went over this at length and Kathy drooled on it, I mean, expressed in succinct, succinct form. Did a good job. All right, no discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item J, this one's a little shorter, Resolution 1720, approving sponsor contract maintenance of automatic weather observation system.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution 17-20 adopting the execution of the sponsor contract by the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners and the Michigan Department of Transportation for the purpose of obtaining federal aid for the development of the St. Clair County International Airport under contract number 2017-0720.
Support? We have a motion to support, any discussion? This is something that is required. We pay it quarterly, costs us about $2,000 a year, but it's used by a lot of different agencies, including you yourself. If you want to call up, there's a hotline number you can call up and get an instant weather report, wind direction, things of that nature. And it's a loop, changes about every 10, 15 minutes, so I have that number, it's a top secret number, if you want it, see me after the meeting. 810-364-7787, but don't give it out to anybody, just for you guys here. All right, we have a second on that? Support? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Item K, the Mead and Hunt Agreement, Design of ILS Runway 422 and Airfield Lighting Rehabilitation.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the Mead and Hunt Contract, and the number's in the resolution, for professional engineering services for the rehabilitation of ILS Runway 4/22 and the design and rehabilitation of the ILS Runway 422 airfield lighting in the amount of $224,291, of which $12,000 will be our required local share.
Support? Motion to support, discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item L, 2018 Pension and Retirees Healthcare Contribution Rates.
Which one? L?
Yes.
I didn't realize we had, I thought we had a Mead and Hunt Agreement.
Mead and Hunt Agreement?
I have L to approve the pension contribution. Amount of $3,517,819, 17%, and any budget dollars remaining shall be contributed to the healthcare trust fund as recommended by the Administrator Controller.
Support? Motion to support, discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item M, Airport Manning Table Request.
I move to approve the Manning Table Change as requested by the St. Clair County International Airport, which includes one FTE for Buildings and Grounds Worker in lieu of one part-time and one seasonal position for a total cost of $20,274.
Support? Motion to support, any discussion? All right, let's do a roll call on that. There is a little cost in there of about $9,000.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item N, Day Treatment Night Watch Manning Table Request.
I'd move to approve the Manning Table Request Change as requested by the DTNW Program, which includes elimination of a part-time at-risk youth worker and the addition of a part-time mental health therapist with an impact of $1,178 for the remainder of 2017.
Support? Motion to support, any discussion? Think the paperwork's there, it's pretty self-explanatory. Roll call.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item O, District Court Manning Table Request.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the District Court Manning Table Adjustment to add one part-time probation officer, one full-time court clerk, three, and one part-time court clerk, one, as recommended by Administration.
Support? Motion to support, discussion? I think we hashed this out already. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item P, Genoa AQOL Healthcare Company Advanced Care Extension Inmate Pharmaceutical.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the six-month extension of the Genoa Healthcare Company's agreement with St. Clair County in the amount not to exceed $250,000 to provide prescription drug requirements to all inmates at the Sheriff's Office and the Intervention Center.
Support? I have a motion to support. We discussed this last week pretty much at length. Anybody have any additional questions? Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item Q, Resolution 1721 for Winter Tax Levy.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve Resolution, Resolution 17-22 imposing 2016 Property Tax Levy pursuant to PA 357 of 2004 and Notice of Certification of Tax Levy.
Support? All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed?
No roll call when we collect, just when we pay?
Yeah, that's probably our most important vote tonight.
Clerk tells me that we don't need it on a resolution.
No, you should run that.
But we're going to do it. I feel we should. So, let's do the roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item R, Resolution 1723.
I move to adopt.
Apportioning Taxes for 2017.
Resolution 1723 for apportioning taxes for 2017.
Support? Any discussion? It's an interesting document, if you want to go look at it there for your community, so take a look at it. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Item S, Board of Canvassers Reappointments.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the reappointment of Dean Boldruff, Republican Party, and Rachel Dickinson, Democratic Party, to the Board of Canvassers for a four-year term expiring November 1st, 2021.
Second? Motion to support, discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, item T is the Resolution 1724 Judicial Court, Front of Court Supervisors, 1118 through 13120 contract.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of Resolution 17-24 ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with the 31st Judicial Circuit Court Supervising Unit for the term of 01-0118, 2018 through 1231, 2020.
Support? Motion to support? Roll call, please.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Okay, this is the one you've been looking for, guys, the last one. Item V is the November Full Board of Commissioners Meeting Date. Skip to you. Skip to you. You, oh, I'm sorry, Resolution, yep, I got it. Resolution 1725, CBA Probate and Circuit Court Family Court Division Clerical Employees Contract.
This time, I'd like to move to approve Resolution 17-25 ratifying the collective bargaining agreement with probate and Circuit Court Family Clerical Employees TPOA Unit for the term January 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019.
Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiya?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
All right, what I said before about the last one. Item V, November Full Board of Commissioners Meeting Date changed from the 3rd to the 2nd Thursday of the month.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I believe this resolution's important to everyone sitting in the front row. I move that we change the date of our November regular board meeting from November 16th, 2017, to November 19th, 2017, still at 6:00 PM, still at the Board of Commissioners Chambers here in this building.
Support? Motion and a support, discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. All right. Very good, gentlemen.
Opposed. I have to vote no because I can't attend tonight.
That's okay.
He did, he did every, everything he could to keep his attendance perfect. Yeah, I had an airplane ticket and everything to fly home for the meeting and our meeting got changed. So, I'm just letting you know that I did get excused because I was going to be here and enough people weren't that we weren't going to have a forum on the 16th. So, bring a lot of extra people and talk long on that meeting if you will.
Commissioner McConnell, you done?
Go ahead.
All right, moving on. Administrator's Report.
Okay. Earlier this month, myself along with Danielle and several other members of administration were invited to McLaren Hospital as part of their community outreach program. We were able to take a tour of their facility and see some of their new patient rooms and they explained kind of the different things that they're doing there. We got to see their new cancer treatment facility and the types of resources they have available, as well as their, what their new patient rooms will look like. They do have mockups in their lobby, if anyone's interested in going to see, they have what the patient rooms will look like. Very nice. Next month, we will be bringing to you the Brownfield Plan for the St. Clair Inn Project along with a public hearing that will be scheduled at your committee meeting on that Brownfield Plan. They do need that approval prior to the end of the year to lock in the taxable rates, the existing taxable rates prior to beginning on the project. Earlier today was the first of two scheduled public hearings that the Blue Water Authority has been having on evaluating a facility needs of our current rail station. There were probably about 50 to 60 people in attendance, a lot of public interest, a lot of questions. The next one will be next Thursday in the auditorium at 6:00 PM if anybody was not in attendance today that would like to.
Is it next Thursday, Carrie?
Yes, next Thursday. So, if anyone has any railroad concerns about where the station's located.
Was there anybody from the railroad there?
Um, there were several individuals with railroad backgrounds that were there that spoke.
On that, as many of you know, I take the train once or twice a month and two months ago, I got, so I was showing up at the train station, the train departs Port Huron at 6:20 AM. I was getting so I'd show up at 6:10, get out of my car, walk in, I showed up.
Not only the parking lot was full of cars, every square piece of sod in the whole train station was covered. There were cars parked all over the place illegally, and there were a hundred people with cases of beer under their arms. And I was, I really rushed and had to park my car illegally. And, uh, as it turns out, um, these people were all from Sarnia, and they were going to Chicago to see two baseball games on Friday and Saturday night. So, uh, that's something I'm gonna try and bring up to, to the, uh, in this public hearing, is the fact that we really need much larger parking facilities for these peak events.
Yep, parking was discussed as one of the areas of concern at the existing facility, and there were representatives there from a Sarnia Railroad Coalition, um, that were also there providing input as well, since a lot of the ridership does come from across the border.
Well, could this gets addressed, it'll be, Port Huron Township will be addressing this facility that's gonna be in their township, and the Planning Commission will put specific requirements for parking before that gets approved, so that can part with public hearing, and the Planning Commission also, once it moves forward.
Well, at this point, they have not identified a location, they're just getting public input to see, um, what viable options may be, including staying at the existing location and reconfiguring to provide for some more parking and, um, different things like that.
And, and the first job I had after I graduated from college, one of my responsibilities was to coordinate the dedication facility of that railroad station. I remember that when it was originally open alone.
So you're part of the problem with limited parking?
Yes. I'm glad to be a pioneer that brought rail trans, passenger transportation in Port Huron again.
Mr. Tamiya, and so you know, uh, this is back in the seventies also, that, uh, a bunch of Michigan people boarded that train and headed to Toronto with a bunch of alcohol.
Was that a steam engine?
Fire steam engine, right?
No steam engine? Uh, let's get back to the Administrator's Report.
Um, next month, we will be bringing to you an agreement for your consideration from the Central Dispatch Advisory Board and our dispatch for the county to switch to the Pacific Fiber Network from our AT&amp;T trunk line. Um, the CDA Board did receive a presentation on that about two months back, and they did vote in favor of moving to that system. Currently, there are sixty-three counties either on that network or in the process of moving to it. So when the county moves to that system, we will be able to have backup from any dispatch center that is on that network. So we will have, um, the availability of sixty-three different centers backing us up. There is no cost to the county to do that. Currently, that is paid for, that network, through our state nine-one-one fees.
Uh, that, uh, has, uh, residual backup connected?
Yes.
So there's just more than one line?
Correct.
There's, uh...
The current system is a traditional AT&amp;T trunk line, and if that line gets cut, our dispatch center goes down. This is a fully redundant center that would bring fiber into our dispatch center from several different ways. So if that line is cut, it just gets rerouted in a different direction. Uh, next month, Danielle will be coming to you at your committee meeting and presenting, uh, the two thousand eighteen General Fund Proposed Budget, and at this time, the public hearing on the budget will be scheduled for November ninth, prior to the full board meeting. Um, we received notice earlier this week that Joe Bixler has taken a new position with MSU Extension. He will now be working in, um, with state and local government and community food systems, so we will be getting a new district coordinator. At this time, our temporary coordinator is Matt Shane. Um, he is filling in, and I will, um, when we get a permanent one assigned, we will let you know. But Mr. Bixler would like to come to the board, um, in the next, sometime in the next two months, and give a brief presentation on his new role and how that will fit in with the county board. And last item, we are currently working on our plan to meet the Indigent Defense Compliance Standards. That plan is due to the state by November twentieth. Um, just as a reminder, those four standards, our training requirements for the court-appointed attorneys, counsel at first appearance, um, the availability of a budget for expert witnesses and, um, investigators, as well as meeting space provided for those attorneys to meet with their clients prior to court.
I understand that, um, there's some state money coming down to increase the pay for the attorneys that are doing that, based on whether it's a misdemeanor or a felony?
Well, there's currently no funds allocated in the state budget for this. However, we are required to file our plan, but we are not required to implement it until the state provides us funding to pay our costs, increase costs. That's it.
Questions for the Administrator's Report? Yes.
Not on your report tonight, but the report that you made at our previous meeting about the bidding of the Animal Patrol. Uh, I've been contacted, uh, by some constituents who were able to access the bids on the MITM website. Uh, their question for me was, um, are we proactively sending out the proposal to interested groups in the area?
Yes, I'm glad you reminded me, I didn't have that on my list. Um, the bids were posted last, late last Friday, on the thirteenth, um, and they are out there to review, and our purchasing department also sent out letters. Um, she attempted to locate rescues and shelters in, you know, the lower Michigan area, and over seventy-five letters were sent out, letting people know that we are soliciting bids for, um, shelter services and how to access those bids.
Thank you.
What's the deadline for... Gooding?
Um, any questions are due by Monday, October thirtieth, and the final bids are due by November fifteenth. We do have a walkthrough scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-sixth, from eleven to one o'clock, so any interested parties in bidding can come and walk through or tour our facility so they can, um, get a better understanding of what they're bidding on.
And tell me again, roughly how many letters were sent out?
Uh, approximately seventy-five.
Thank you.
Carrie, on the walkthrough, will that be just for the bidders or for anybody?
Um, well, at this point, you know, we're hoping that, um, potential interested bidders would be there for the walkthrough.
Because I'm thinking somebody coming in bidding for it may have a group of people with them.
Correct.
And it might get a little bit crowded if, if it was open to the public. Just a question.
Yeah, the intent of the walkthrough is for parties that may be interested in bidding on taking over our sheltering services for us.
Very good. Anything for the Administrator's Report? If not, I'll take a receive and file, if you would.
I'd make motion to receive and file packets that were sent to Commissioners, packets at their places, and any other information presented.
Uh, first, we gotta do the Administrator's Report. Receive and file Administrator's Report.
I also move...
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, miscellaneous business. None? You're up, sir.
I reiterate my receiving file.
Support?